Clear it out. This is a joke. Y'all need to get it together. Listen to your community. Listen to your parents. Listen.
Tensions boiling over tonight at a suburban school district.
Parents say their children are walking into chaos every day after high schools were consolidated.
Anthony Ponce live tonight with the story. Anthony.
Yes, Corey and Dawn at tonight's board meeting here at Rich Township High School District 227. Parents and teachers describe a school that is right now disorganized, in chaos, and the problems that they described are very wide-ranging. It's almost hard to sum up, given all the things that they brought up in front of the board a little bit earlier tonight. They say that physical violence, physical altercations, they are at an all-time high right now, unprecedented. The number of fights that have broken out in recent weeks.
Okay, so what kind of school do you think got consolidated with these suburban, these suburban Chicago? Glider flighters. These people who fled the city 20, 30 years ago and created a little enclave in the suburbs where they could, you know, not bury their kids when they're 14, 15, and 16 years old and not be, have their kids sleeping in bathtubs like kids in Chicago. So that stray bullets, when stray bullets inevitably come through the wall, they don't kill anybody. What kind of school do you think their school got consolidated with?
They say that physical violence, physical altercations, they are at an all-time high right now, unprecedented. The number of fights that have broken out in recent weeks, like the one captured on video. Teachers say that there's little or no protocol in place to call in extra security to help out the situation. Teachers say that they are experiencing burnout right now because the flex schedule that was put in place for COVID is an absolute mess with groups of students on campus with nowhere to go, nothing to do. Only 20 minutes allowed for lunch in some cases, when the lunch line itself can take that long or longer. They describe students being unaccounted for, fire alarms being pulled, and teachers and students being assaulted.
So what they did was they took Rich Central, Rich South, and Park Forest schools and consolidated those three schools into two schools. So those kids at that good school, at those other two schools, had to absorb those kids from that one sunny school. And now, this is what they're dealing with. And nobody can say anything about it. Think about it. During, during, during the whole meeting, town hall the parents had, you won't hear about what the problem is. During this whole news clip, you won't hear about what the problem is. No one will say that the integration or the consolidation of these schools, the adding of kids from a certain demographic, has completely changed the school. They'll talk around it. And they'll say it without saying it. And that's privilege. How, how do these people talk about they being a, that's privilege. The privilege that no one ever actually says. I mean, and this is bad, like assaulting teachers, assaulting resource officers, assaulting other students. The climate of the schools, the other two schools has completely changed, like completely. They were STEM schools with great academics, no violence, to what it is now, just from the addition of a certain group of kids. And nobody can even touch it. Nobody can even broach it. That's a privilege.
Clear it out. This is a joke. Y'all need to get it together. Listen to your community. Listen to your parents. Listen.
Tensions boiling over tonight at a suburban school district.
Parents say their children are walking into chaos every day after high schools were consolidated.
Anthony Ponce live tonight with the story. Anthony.
Yes, Corey and Dawn at tonight's board meeting here at Rich Township High School District 227. Parents and teachers describe a school that is right now disorganized, in chaos, and the problems that they described are very wide-ranging. It's almost hard to sum up, given all the things that they brought up in front of the board a little bit earlier tonight. They say that physical violence, physical altercations, they are at an all-time high right now, unprecedented. The number of fights that have broken out in recent weeks, like the one captured on video. Teachers say that there's little or no protocol in place to call in extra security to help out the situation. Teachers say that they are experiencing burnout right now because the flex schedule that was put in place for COVID is an absolute mess with groups of students on campus with nowhere to go, nothing to do. Only 20 minutes allowed for lunch in some cases, when the lunch line itself can take that long or longer. They describe students being unaccounted for, fire alarms being pulled, and teachers and students being assaulted. Meantime, parents say their kids are often confused as to where they need to be and when. They're not learning effectively and that the parents accuse the administration here of trying to paint a rosy picture than what is actually going on.
I, I implore all the parents and all the community members to get up in arms and get angry and get that fire in the belly and act like they're getting whatever the decisions and plans that are put in place that aren't working.
Look, sister. Let's just be frank. This was a great school until your kids came. Period, point blank. So, all this other reindeer, the man, and then, that's privilege. You get to do that when it's your kids causing all the problems. That's privilege.
Blame game and all that stuff has got to stop and we've got to solve this. We want an orderly academic environment that is safe for our staff and our students.
Those days are over, man. Like, let me just tell you this, like, I went to public schools in the Sun community. I mean, I didn't have a glacier glider classmate the whole time I was in public school. Not one. Public schools are very segregated. And one reason why they're segregated in certain communities is because glacier glider parents can't send their kids to those schools because it's too violent. And the violence and the low lack of achievement and the, um, the students', um, disposition to what school is. School is to be in a social setting instead of a learning environment. Then you have the gangs and all the other things that the kids have to deal with that also hinder their ability to learn. You know, the teasing, you know, the, the, "Oh, you acting like you better than someone." "You acting like a glacier glider." "You think you're a glacier glider because you smart." All that stuff, I seen it, man. It just, listen, man, we had fight, we had a rule at my junior high school that if you hit the ground, everybody would just jump on you. And you had to be a thorough dude for this not to happen to you. If you fell during a fight, everybody just jumped on you. It was, it was like, I started like humbly, like, and then it was like, oh, then they just started doing it. And then every time you was in, anytime it was a fight, if a person fell, everybody just started kicking that person. And that was just the thing there. Like, it was always fights, man. All the time, especially after school. But there was a lot of fights during school too. And it's just part of it, like, it's not even like a sub-part of it. That's like the main part of it. And then girls and, you know, getting girls and the girl-boy thing, that's very, but central to the whole experience was fighting. For girls and boys too. It wasn't a sidebar. It wasn't a side dish. It was the steak in the middle of your plate. And I don't know how you change that. You know, other than removing those kids from the environment. It's the only way you can change that. Hence, how you guys made your communities when you left the city, when you removed yourself and you all just segregated yourselves. So that was the only way you actually even had what you had until, like, we came along and ruined it, was that the separation.
Blame game and all that stuff has got to stop and we've got to solve this. We want an orderly academic environment that is safe for our staff and our students.
That teacher you heard from just there has 19 years of experience in this district. As for the administration, the superintendent and principal say they have added 15 additional security guards. They have extended cafeteria hours. They put more disciplinary measures into place to remove problem students from the campus. But again, those are all measures that the parents and teachers who showed up here tonight say are not working and they need a new plan and they need that new plan quickly.
How many of you guys get upset with me? Just a ten, ten. Hit one if you get upset with me when I say nothing works. Better yet, scratch that. Hit one if you just disagree with me when I say nothing works. Because I say that often, nothing works. These are things that you can't change. It just, it's just the nature of, it's just how it is. That's just the way it is. Some things will never change. That's just the way it is. Some things will never change. It's just the way it is. You gotta understand, I'm not saying that like for shock value. I'm not saying, oh, that's just the way it is, just so I can, I can be, ah, bad, I think, no, no. Nothing works. Okay? Nothing works.
That teacher you heard from just there has 19 years of experience in this district. As for the administration, the superintendent and principal say they have added 15 additional security guards. They have extended cafeteria hours. They put more disciplinary measures into place to remove problem students from the campus. But again, those are all measures that the parents and teachers who showed up here tonight say are not working and they need a new plan and they need that new plan quickly. We are live tonight in South Suburban Madison. Anthony Ponce at Fox 32 Chicago.
Tonight, there is new information coming out of the Parkway School District about who left racist messages inside of Parkway Central's boys restroom. The district says the person who wrote slurs aimed against black people was a black student.
Now, you guys will probably be shocked by that. A lot of you will probably be, oh my God. Well, I've been doing this for years, 6,000 videos in. Make sure you subscribe to all my channels. Ock Nation TV. All the links in the description box. Join me each Tuesday and Friday at 9:30. Livestream, StreamYard. Come through, click the link, talk to me personally. But a lot of you guys hear that, oh my God.
The district says the person who wrote slurs aimed against black people was a black student.
And y'all think that's something that is just bizarre. It's like headline grabbing. It's, tell a friend, you won't believe this. Well, this is how most of these hoaxes turn out. Most of these racial graffiti things turn out. This is how the majority of them turn out. And I wouldn't be surprised if this kid was, um, 50/50, if you know what I mean. But if he was a, if he was a sun glider. But this is how it turns out. And it's been documented. There's this website where they document this stuff. All the, they take, scour the news for every racial graffiti or racial thing. Somebody wrote some graffiti here on the college campus or somebody put a KKK hood somewhere or a new somewhere. And I promise you, almost 99.8% of the time, it was done by a person from that group that whatever offense was done was supposed to offend. 99.8% of them were hoaxes. Yeah, the vast majority of these are just complete and utter sinister. I mean, to, to literally set a campus ablaze with racial tension. And we find out that you, some, some sun man or some sun woman actually spray painted the derogatory terms in the bathroom or spray painted them on their dorm, on their doors, spray painted it in the library or wrote it on this or did that or destroyed their own car in many cases. One case, there was a kid who spray painted his car. It's just documented. Just look it into it. Just look into it. It's, it's really sad what they're doing out here. Look, 90, I tell you, I promise you, 99.8% of them are hoaxes. Which tells you one thing about this country. That if you have to, if 99.8% of the hate crimes that you hear about, and I'm not talking about Jesse. I'm talking about all of them are hoaxes. This is a damn fine country we live in and they're gonna ruin it with all this stuff. They're gonna make a lot of real racists. And it's gonna be unfortunate because we got it good now. In the future, maybe 90% of them will be hoaxes. That'll be a tragedy.
Tonight, there is new information coming out of the Parkway School District about who left racist messages inside of Parkway Central's boys restroom. The district says the person who wrote slurs aimed against black people was a black student. The discovery led to students staging a walkout last week and students demanding change. Despite the fact the student was black, Parkway Superintendent tells News 4, quote, "This does not diminish the hurt it caused or the negative impact it had on our entire community. The student is facing severe disciplinary consequences and referral to law enforcement for investigation." The discovery led to students staging a walkout last week and students demanding change. Despite the fact the student was black, Parkway Superintendent tells News 4, quote, "This does not diminish the hurt it caused or the negative impact it had on our entire community. The student is facing severe disciplinary consequences and referral to law enforcement for investigation." Racist graffiti was also found at Parkway North High School last week. The school district says they're still investigating that incident.
A photo of someone thought to be a student inside what appears to be a classroom was holding that sign and it is all over the internet.
A photo of someone thought to be a student in a place that was thought to be a classroom. Listen, man, I would never send my kid to a public school. I'm sorry. My kid private school, something, I can't, they, by the time my kid is ready to go to school, she's 11 months now. Just think about how these schools are gonna be in 10 years.
A photo of someone thought to be a student inside what appears to be a classroom was holding that sign and it is all over the internet. Now, that photo is said to be directed at the students of this high school here at Esperanza High School in Anaheim. In order to understand the story, you need to see the sign.
Something you shouldn't post, at least keep it at your school, probably.
Sal is a senior at Esperanza High School in Anaheim. He's one of many talking about this. It reads, "Your dad is my gardener." The sign was made by students at crosstown rival Yorbalinda High School and widely distributed on social media. The sign seems to openly mock Latino students at Esperanza High. It caught the attention of officials at the Placentia Yorbalinda School District.
That's some fine landscaping right there, Jack. And, um, listen, man. I worked at Home Depot for eight years. You guys know that. Lumber building material department. It's only Ombrito landscapers for me, Jack. They get the job done. They come in and they knock the job out and they gone. They ain't messing around. They don't take no breaks. They don't put you through no, listen, man, I just moved. Y'all know I just moved. I want you to understand. I moved. My move cost almost $8,000. That's how much stuff we had to move from DC to Pennsylvania. Because they, they moving in these big trucks. And I packed up the whole house and they came and they took the stuff into a truck. And then we went up to Pennsylvania and then, no, we, we stayed at a friend's house and then they called us and told us they were headed up and then we met them up in Pennsylvania. I promise you, man. When we got, when they got there and I saw the size of that truck and they opened up that door on that, um, truck and I saw them boxes and the other stuff, I said, I didn't even realize I had that much stuff. My wife too, but, and the baby, so much stuff for the baby. But I want you to know that. Two Ombritos. One was 5'5" and one was 5'2", 5'3". If that. Knocked that whole move out. I'm talking about the mattresses and everything in an hour and a half. It was out. It was out. Gone, on to the next job. When I saw that little guy taking that mattress up them steps and I have a California king. Okay? And he took that thing up the steps by himself. I was like, man. I said, man, I couldn't have done that. Number 6'3". I couldn't have done it, man. I know I couldn't have. That little dude took that, he looked, you ever see the ants with the big piece of big crumb? And the crumb is like 10 times. So yeah, man, only Ombrito landscapers for me, Jack. And it's been that way ever since I started working at Home Depot. If I need something done and I want it done right, I'm not calling no glacier gliders. I'm not calling no sun men. I'm not calling no crouching tigers. And shout out to Steve Kim, man, for the shout out on, um, Jason Whitlock Show. Fearless with Jason Whitlock. I'm not hiring nobody but an Ombrito.
Your dad is my gardener. The sign was made by students at crosstown rival Yorbalinda High School and widely distributed on social media. The sign seems to openly mock Latino students at Esperanza High. It caught the attention of officials at the Placentia Yorbalinda School District. They would not comment on camera, but issued this statement instead. It reads in part, "The district will not tolerate this kind of damaging behavior by our students or on our school campuses. Destructive sentiments as such go against the district's mission of inspiring all students through rigorous and relevant educational experiences that empower them to become responsible, ethical contributing citizens."
Jeez, did Michael Eric Dyson write this statement for them? God, Lee, that's the, what, what is the meaning, man? And who cares? Is it, is, is, look, man, who cares?
"The district will not tolerate this kind of damaging behavior by our students or on our school campuses. Destructive sentiments as such go against the district's mission of inspiring all students through rigorous and relevant educational experiences that empower them to become responsible, ethical contributing citizens."
I think it could be offensive to some people, but I think for most people it's just a joke.
On Wednesday, both campuses were busy. Parents picking up kids at Esperanza High School, which is 44% white and 37% Hispanic. Off camera, parents expressed outrage. One Latino dad calling the sign racist. Some expressed disappointment.
I think it crosses the line.
Keep in mind, this is the week leading up to the big game Friday night where Yorbalinda and Esperanza will compete on the football field. Was it trash talk gone bad?
Yeah, man. It's 15, 16, 17, 18-year-olds. The week of the big game. Of course, the one Esperanza school probably said some stuff that's not getting any attention. Because remember, glacier gliders gotta take it, man. You can say anything about, I'm, trust me, I'm a sun man, man. I could say anything about glacier gliders and it wouldn't cost me nothing. Career-wise, nothing. I could go to ESPN, Fox News, whatever, sports, whatever. With a whole litany of comments, public comments, tweets about glacier gliders and it ain't gonna cost me nothing. So I'm sure the Esperanza school said a bunch of stuff about the other school and then the school said that back and it's kind of like what I say all the time on this channel. Glacier gliders are held to a higher standard. More is expected of them. You know? Even though Ombritos are not quite like the children of the world, like sun people are, in America, they still have a, um, a minority status or what do you want to call it? As protected class, POC status. So in their dealings with, it's kind of like Big Bang take Little Bang. When they, if, 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 when they, when Ombritos are dealing with sun people, sun people are the victims. When Ombritos are dealing with glacier gliders, Ombritos are the victims. So it's like, you know, hierarchy, a, 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 a racial totem pole. And, um, a victimology totem pole. So, um, I'm sure those kids at the Latino school said a lot of things about glacier gliders. I'm sure they did. Because you have carte blanche. You have, you have the green light to do that. And they just gotta take it. And there were a lot worse things that those, those glacier glider kids could have said other than, your dad's my gardener. There's a whole lot worse things they could have said. That was actually pretty clever, when you think about it.
Was it trash talk gone bad? District officials say that they will continue to investigate this. District officials say that they will continue to investigate this case. On social media, people were saying that in fact, the students had been identified and they had been punished. And as for that big game on Friday night between the Aztecs and the Mustangs.
I'm sorry, man. This woman like, look like Michael Jackson, man. And what if you think this woman look like Michael Jackson, man? Post eighty-eight Michael Jackson.
District officials say that they will continue to investigate this case. On social media, people were saying that in fact, the students had been identified and they had been punished. And as for that big game on Friday night between the Aztecs and the Mustangs, it's still planning to take place. Laura Diaz reporting live from Anaheim. Now back to the studio, Chris and Marla.